At this time, I call the June meeting of the County Commission to order. We have with us tonight Reverend Lilly Mae Hill, pastor of the Antioch CME Church on Amity Woodlawn Road in the south part of the county. That's a historic church and has a lot of history, a lot of good history and one night bad history. And I guess you know about that too. Ms. Hill, if you would, come to this podium and following the invocation by Reverend Hill, we'll have the pledge of allegiance to the flag by Commissioner Tankersley, then we'll take just a minute because she wants a picture.
Good evening, everyone. We bring you heartfelt greetings and salutations from the Amity Woodlawn Road, 2006, where Antioch CME Church sits. We also bring you greetings from our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ, for truly, we are better together, and this day we will have assembled together. Let us go across the throne of grace. Most gracious and everlasting Father God, we are your servant leaders, and we have come together to do the work that you have tasked us to do. Father, we ask that you come in the midst of this meeting, that everything be conducted in your image. And then, Father, we pray that as we depart from here, we depart in love and everything has gone out the way that you have planned for it to go. Now, Father, look upon your children, for we know that we are better together because we serve a risen Savior, and he has no respect to person, and therefore we have no respect to person for our love and our coming and our giving. Have mercy upon us now. Enter into this building. Have your way in the midst of everything that goes forth, and we'll be so careful to always be united in love, always give you the honor, the glory, and the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Hill, everybody's gonna be in the picture.
You're gonna get a picture?
Yeah, I was gonna say everybody.
Stay there. Before we did come out, get up. Many a day I wanted to try to come up here because that's the piece of business that y'all did.
Okay, you're good to see you.
If y'all have anything good that you call me, if it's bad, you call me back.
I don't know what y'all, y'all.
Come on back.
Do you want us to come around?
We are so pleased that we are in this family. We are so grateful to y'all for giving us this honor. We thank the commissioners for recognizing our little church on the field.
We appreciate you taking time and drive. Hope it is.
Oh, not at all, not at all. Amen.
Right after, when you're down, that's all that you have.
Okay, can I have a second? Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you all.
All ten down. Item, agenda item four is the approval of the agenda, I mean, the minutes, is there a motion that we approve the minutes as sent to you?
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion? Chair hears none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motions carried. Item five is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motions carried. Item six is departmental reports, Office of Emergency Services Director Broom.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. You have my printed reports. If there are no questions, I have nothing to add.
Any questions on his report that you've had? If not, thank you. Six B is Recreation, Director Glazier's reports in here, he's homesick. Robbie, you know what's wrong with him, I don't. So if you have any questions, you can contact Director Glazier. Six C is Finance, Director Doss.
Chairman and Commissioners, you have our printed reports. The only thing I'd like to add with them, I have our preliminary discussion with our auditors, so we're laying the groundwork for getting this fiscal year closed and getting the audit completed. That's all my reports, Chairman. When you're ready, I'll read the cash report.
Director Doss, if you would, would you turn that PA up just a half? We got a new PA system and audio visual that the state of Georgia gracious enough to give to six counties in the tuning circuit, so this is the first time we doing it, and Commissioner Clyde can't hear real good, so.
Amen. Hello, Chairman.
All right, Chairman, I will make sure that I check a little further. We've got a little bit more tuning in. Our cash report for the month ending May of 2025, our SLOFT seven fund, $2,284,699. Our transportation SLOFT fund, $1,429,343. Our solid waste fund, $936,781. Our general fund, $849,735. Our American Rescue Plan Fund, $336,477. The emergency fund, $313,420. And the water reserve fund, $275,388. We have several other funds, but those are our major funds. The total cash and cash, the total cash in all our bank accounts at the end of May was $6,294,284. In our Raymond James account, our 12 months each, we had $1,598,802. Our enhanced savings account, we had $543,111 for a total. And our investment accounts are $2,141,913. Our total cash and cash equivalents at the end of May were $9,66,197.
Okay, I know it's gonna be a question, so I'll go ahead and ask it to you. Do you have any idea when we will receive the just under, I think, just under $3 million that we got tied up with Helene?
No, sir, Chairman. Director Broom and I were on call last week with Gina, and he answered that question specifically, and their answer was, we've turned it over to finance, we don't know when it will be paid.
Do we know if any other counties around us has gotten their money yet?
In talking to our auditors who audit, who do several other counties, none of the counties that they have, that they work with have gotten any of their funds, including the counties that had asked for the advanced 50% funding.
Okay, any questions, Director Doss? If not, we accept that. If you have any questions, get in touch with him. Six D is Public Works, Director Seymour. While he's coming, you have in your book the report from the Recreation Department, as well as the report from the 911 Communications, as well as the report from the County Extension Service. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You have my reports in Public Works. I don't have anything to add to the reports unless you have some questions, but I do have a couple of updates I'd like to give the board if there's no questions on the reports.
I really didn't hear you too, because you pulled that microphone up.
Yeah, I got it as close as I can, but I said, you've got my written reports, I don't have anything to add to those unless there's questions, but I do have a couple of updates I'd like to give if there aren't any questions.
Okay, Director Doss, can you hear real well? You got some.
Yes, I have air issues this time, so I can't hear. Chairman, look me up. Try yours, your speaker here. I turned it off a little bit.
Okay, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to give you a brief update of some things that's going on in Public Works that y'all are aware of. I wanted to give you an update on paving, for the most part. So we have been able to pave Tabernacle Church Road and Ebenezer Baptist Church Road. The range kind of calls right now, so we're in between, so Reed Road would be next on the list. So that operation continues probably for the next month or so. I wanted to give you an update on that. The second thing is, is that DOT has started the paving or re construction through a contract with DOT, has actually started paving on the TIA two roads that were in our, in our TIA projects, and they've already paved, Colvin Kennedy, and they've already paved Mercier Road. So those two have already been paved, the shoulders have already been built, and the striping's been done on those two roads, and they will continue to work on the others, filling gaps in the other projects they had. They had a little gap, they went ahead and did those two roads. I think the next one's gonna be Partridge Town Road, and I'm not exactly sure when that will take place, but it will hopefully be done prior to October 1st, which was the original date they gave us that they were gonna start. So I did want to update y'all on that, that you know what was going on. Work still continues on McGill and Goldman Johnson, so we'll have a progress update from them. I think it's the latter part of June, we'll be meeting with Cranston to kind of go over where we're at on those two projects, maybe with some alignments of those roads and what's gonna change, what needs to change. So anyway, I just wanted to give you an update on those projects as we're working through them, so.
Any questions, Director Seymour? Not, we'll move right along. It's time, we, item, agenda item seven, we have to take up recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Board, but we got to go into executive session. Is there a motion, I mean, into public hearing, is there a motion, we go into public hearing?
Send it, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none. We are in our public hearing. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is H. Cooper Clyde, MAP 54, parcel 0828, better known as 3996 Augusta Highway, consists of 2.22 acres, currently is on A1, I mean, sorry, A2. He's applied for a special use to operate a six-bed personal care home, and after hearing at the planning commission meeting on May the 6th, the planning commission voted unanimously to approve the special use for a six-bed personal care home to be located at that address, Chairman.
Okay, you heard the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this setback, this special use? Is not, is there anyone here that would like to speak for it? Seems like everything's good and good. Commissioner Clyde, I'm satisfied you know you can vote.
Yes, sir.
You'll have to recuse yourself on this one. Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation of Planning and Board and grant this special use?
Send it, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
No vote, you never vote here.
Huh?
No vote, you never vote here.
Look like long as I've been here, I know different. Seven B, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The second applicant is Mr. Matthew Philip Perkins, MAP 67A, parcel 078, better known as 1795 Comanche Circle, consists of .46 acres. It is, it is on Arlen One. Mr. Perkins had a shed that Mr. Troy Darren, Hurricane Helane, and he is wanting to build the shed back on the original foundation of the building. However, that foundation is only five foot from the property line instead of 10 foot, and so he's asking for a variance for that five-foot setback. My recommendation from the planning commission was to approve the variance unanimously, Chairman.
Okay, you heard the recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve the five-foot setback. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this setback? Ms. Perkins, I thought, did you, Ms. Perkins, didn't you call me this afternoon and you were opposed to this?
No, but I must speak for you.
Okay, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor of it? Okay, I got y'all's instructions now. Is there a motion that we come out of our public hearing?
Send it.
Send it.
Our motion is, that's second.
That's second.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde, to come out of the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign motions carried. We had our whole public hearing, now we'll take the recommendation of Planning Commission on Mr. Clyde for a special use for a six-bed personal care home at 3996 Augusta Highway. Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. The motion is carried. Let the record show that Commissioner Clyde recused himself and abstained from the voting. Director Doss, Seymour.
Yes, sir. The second one is Mr. Perkins for the five-foot setback. We need a motion and a second on that, Chairman.
Okay, you have the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning, nobody's here to oppose it. Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission? Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, is that second?
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. The motion is carried. You got it? Now, for that camera back there, we're gonna speed this beating up for the rest of it. We spent three hours and 35 minutes last Thursday in our work session.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. So we pretty well know what we doing, don't we? That lady's from Lincoln General, and she knows we were there a long time, so we're not gonna have to do a whole lot of discussing tonight, it's been discussed, so we're gonna move it as quickly as we possibly can. With that said, item eight is Sheriff's vehicle. Sheriff Smith, you wanna say anything, or do you, you satisfied with?
I'm satisfied.
Okay, I'm gonna need two motions. I need a motion to purchase a 2009 Ford Explorer from the Columbia County Board of Commissioners to the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to be used by the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $2,500 to be paid from the general fund, and to authorize me as chairman to execute all documents related to the purchase. Is there a motion?
Send it, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is that second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion is carried. The second motion is to accept a quote from Duval Ford of Jacksonville, Florida for two 2025 Ford Explorers with police interceptor packages to be at the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $88,116 to be paid for the FY26 Special Purpose Local Options Sales Tax seven funds, and to authorize the chairman to execute all documents related. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Tankersley. Any discussion on the motion? You do know that this is just the purchase of the vehicles, then we'll have an additional cost of about $5,000 a car, I think, is that what, no, about $10,000 a car. About $10,000 a car to go along with that, striping, put everything in them that you have to do. But if we voting on the motion now, $88,116, all in, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion is carried. Sheriff, y'all, you know what you call. Thank you. Item nine is the E911 Communications Southern 911 Server Director Acoff.
Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. E911 Communications is requesting to purchase two new servers along with the associated hardware from Motorola Call Works to replace our current servers that have been there since 2012. The approximate cost for both servers and hardware is $110,183. Originally Motorola was gonna move our existing hardware and servers at the price of $40,000. Therefore, if we decide to go with the new ones, the additional cost would be $70,183.
Director Doss, is the total, the total of the 110 plus the 70?
The total is 110, that's the 40 that we'd already allocated to move the old server, so it'd be 110 plus 40, which is the dollar amount that Director gave you.
Okay.
That's the additional funds we would need.
So we approved the $110,183.
Yes, sir. Well, what you would be approving would be, that's the amount that we would contract with Motorola, you would be approving an additional, Director.
$70,183.
Okay, we're gonna approve the 70.
Yes, sir.
You gave me a lot of these motions, why didn't you give me this one? This is the most complicated one we have.
I'm sorry, I had to leave them.
Okay, I got it now. We talked so long the other day, I forgot it. We're approving $70,183. I'm assuming that's being paid from seven, too. Okay. All right, is there a motion that we approve $70,183 for Motorola Call Works Service for the Office of 911 Communications?
Send it, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, a second?
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? Commissioner Clyde.
I just have one quick question, is Director Doss, or may I have to answer, but warranty and all that, how much warranty they give us on this?
We will, we're not buying additional warranty service, so we will get the original manufacturer warranty, which I believe is a year on the hardware.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion is carried. Thank you, Director Acoff.
Thank you.
Next, item 10 is the FY25 seed grant application, Director McNeese.
Good evening, Chairman Norman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you this grant. The Lincoln County Development Authority is asking your approval to proceed with a grant application in the amount of $1,020,000. The Development Authority will be responsible for half of that, and this is to create a project that will revitalize the Lamar Blanchard House and make it into a rural innovation, workforce training, and business incubator.
Okay, I think this took up about hour, about three hours the other day, so we won't, we won't get into all that. This is a motion for the seed grant, a motion to submit to the State Economic and Infrastructure Development Seed Grant to the Southeast Crescent Regional Commission for the Lincoln County Development Authority in the amount of $1,020,000 with a 50% match to be funded by Lincoln County Development Authority, and the authorization, authorize the chairman and maybe the clerk to execute any documents related to this. So the total grant is $1,020,000. If the grant is received, then the development part is $510,000.
That's correct.
Is there a motion that we do this?
Send it, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is that second?
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? Y'all discussed it enough, right? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, now we kinda have a lot of luck to get it, so.
Let's hope for the best.
Thank you. Item 11 is the, I don't blame you if I could leave, I would too. Item 11 is the FY26 Federal Transportation Administration 5311 Transit Grant, Director Deal.
Good evening. I am here to ask that you accept the Fiscal Year 2026 FDA Section 5311 Rural Transit Operating Grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation for the full amount of $204,438 with a 50% county cost share of $102,219 to authorize the ends and authorize the chairman to execute all documents related to the grant.
She has read the motion for me, I assume we all understand it. Is there a motion that we accept the grant?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion is carried. Congratulations.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. The next item 12 is Onsoft Code RED Contract, Director Broom.
Chairman and Commissioners, in order to frame our subscription with Code RED in line with our budgeting process and the dates, we are looking to renew the subscription with Onsoft Code, Code RED, beginning 7/1/2025, with two one-year renewals that are costing $2154 for the first year and $8,618.47 for years two and three, with funds from the general fund, and we need to authorize the chairman to execute any documents associated with that subscription renewal.
I didn't know he got the same thing I got. I don't want that no more, they get to me. I read. Okay, you heard my motion. A motion that we accept the emergency communications warning system code red with that cost, I think that total cost is about $25,000. $25,855.27?
The total cost is right at $19,000. They gave us a discount for this year, so we will, the full cost over three years is $19,000, Chairman.
Nineteen what?
Five.
I'll tell you this second.
1939140.
Right there.
Nineteen five?
Yeah, 1939140.
19391, I'm glad you got that, 'cause I got the other one, and I got 25, and I got 21, 546, now I got the right one, 19,391 to be paid out the general fund. This is just review, and we do it every year.
I made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
You got a motion, is that second?
That's seconded.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion? Chair hears none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, and the motion is carried. Item, thank you, Director Broom. Item 13 is the Volunteer Fire Department Equipment Request, Director Broom.
Yes, sir. On May the 8th, 2025, the Fire Services Advisory Committee met and they made two motions in the form of recommendations to the board. The first was to purchase electric vehicle fire blankets, and the other was to purchase two SCBA self-pain breathing apparatus to be assigned to local volunteer fire department.
The best I can figure without, I see this, not exceed 25, I don't think I got to go that high. If we take two electric, the electric. electric vehicle fire blankets.
Yes, sir.
And we use the lowest cost one, that's fourteen fourteen thousand something dollars, is that right? I got it somewhere. I'm showing that the cost of the two blankets and the two Scott airbags, the total seventeen thousand, one thirty-five, forty-nine. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the motion be the purchase of the two EV fire blankets, the two self-contained breathing apparatuses for the Office of Emergency Services that are costing not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. And that, too, will be paid from March seventh. This equipment will belong to Lincoln County. Two blankets are going to two county trucks, and I think you will be putting this airbags at loco.
That's the request, Chairman.
But they will belong, they will belong to Lincoln County. Is there a motion?
Same move, Mr. Chairman.
Now, second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tankersley?
I see three different items on this. And I'm the third item. What is it? Three M Scott AV three thousand HT four dash STKV MED. Give me, what is, what is that?
My best guess, not having it in front of me, is it's the mask that goes on the SCBA. That's the last item in the book?
Yes, sir.
That's included in the cost we just approved of.
Yes, sir.
That's the other pieces that go through the airbags.
Yes, sir.
So we're approving these three purchases and nothing else. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we could have cut that twenty thousand back to seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five, forty-nine cents.
Because of that, what?
What the quote is.
Well, that's the addition of the emergency vehicle fire blankets as well. That's why we were looking at.
This is just, this is just packs, airbags, right? All three of these are.
Yes, sir. There were, there were two recommendations, one to purchase the airbags and the second was to purchase.
All right, I understand that. I'm pleased.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item fourteen is fireworks permitting, Director Broom.
Chairman and Commissioners, in years past, it has been the process of the state to issue fireworks permits for the probate court that was ended in the legislature this year, and it has now been moved to the county, become the county's responsibility. Tonight, we need to set the fee, which is in law at one, at a maximum of one hundred dollars and then ten dollars per copy after three copies. That, Chairman, I believe you're going to stand on how we're going to issue those permits through the county.
Well, I thought when I came up here with the three of us, I was gonna be here everything perfect.
Chairman, is.
Let me, let me, I got it. I, I think I got it from the other day. What, what we're doing is moving the, I mean, under the new state law, the probate judge used to handle the permitting for the fireworks permits we have for a four-year. Now, we are going to move it to the Office of Community Development under the Department of Public Works, and the state has a maximum that we can charge, and a hundred dollars is one of them. So my motion is going to be that we place this over in the Public Works Community Development Office, and we charge what the state allows us to charge.
Yes, sir.
In fees. If that changes next year, we won't have to do it. We just continue to operate what the state says. Fine. Okay, that's the motion. Is there a motion?
I'll make it, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion has carried. Item fifteen is the FY-26 Digital Agent Family Connections, Director Dos.
Chairman and Commissioners, it is time to renew our, our grant with the Family Connections, State Family Connections, and I'm asking the, the board to accept the grant from Family Connections for fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. We will be the fiscal agent for the local family connection. So the request is to authorize, to accept the grant for fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the chairman and clerk to sign all necessary documents.
Okay, you heard, heard the request that we continue to be the fiscal agent for the Family Connection. We accept their grant on fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and give me and the clerk the authority to sign.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Any paperwork. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item sixteen is the FY-25 Certification of the Estimated Rollback of the Millet Rate, Director Dos.
Chairman and Commissioners, I have a resolution. State of Georgia County of Lincoln Resolution, Certification of the Estimated Rollback Millet Rate for county maintenance and operations for 2025. Whereas, House Bill five eighty-one passed in 2024 by the Georgia General Assembly, amended Chapter Five of Title Forty-eight of the Official Code of Georgia annotated by creating the estimated rollback rate in OCGA forty-eight dash five dash two, and whereas.
Mr. Dos?
Chairman.
Without objection, I'd like to suspend the ruling, the reading of the resolution. And that we go ahead and vote that we have, we talked about. I got some somewhere. This this is going to be, our estimated rollback that we talked about last week was ten. We worked on it one day this week, and we'll be able to take that estimated rollback from ten to nine mils. So that's what's in the resolution under the first, now therefore be it resolved. That is an estimate. We don't think it'll be over nine, could be less than nine, once we finish everything. So your, your vote is that our estimated rollback will be nine mils. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Now, second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair is none. Motion is carried. Item seventeen, if you speak loud, I'll vote you. You know if you don't vote, you voted in the affirmative. FY-26 General Fund Budget Resolution, Director Dos.
Chairman and Commissioners, I have a resolution for the approval of the annual balance budget for general fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, fiscal year twenty-six. State of Georgia County of Lincoln Resolution, Approval of the Annual Balance General Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2025, 26. Whereas, it is the duty of the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County, Georgia, the Board, to adopt and operate under an annual balance budget for the general fund, each, each special revenue fund and each debt service fund used by the local government pursuant to Section thirty-six dash eighty-one dash three sub D sub one of the Official Code of Georgia annotated OCGA, and.
Director Dos?
Chairman.
Without objection from the commission, I'd like to spend the reading of the resolution for the general fund budget for FY-25, 26. Mr. Dos, if you want to tell us those numbers?
Yes, Sir Chairman. The general fund revenues for FY-25, 26 are eight billion, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. The expenditures for all departments of the general fund are eight billion, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Chairman, the budget is balanced.
Okay, you heard the request. We've got the resolution. We need to vote on the resolution. And I entertain a motion.
Same move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Clyde?
Do we need to sign this tonight before we leave, or?
Yes, sir, please.
All right, thank you.
Any others question? All in favor of the motion, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, and the motion is carried. Item number eighteen is FY-26 All Other Fund Budget Resolutions, Director Dos.
Chairman and Commissioners, this is the resolution for the budgets for all of our other funds. State of Georgia County of Lincoln Resolution, Approval of the Final Annual Balance All Other Funds Budget for Fiscal Year twenty-five, twenty-six. Whereas, it is the duty of the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County, Georgia, the Board, to adopt and operate under an annual balance budget for the general fund, each special revenue fund, and each debt service fund used by the local government pursuant to Section thirty-six dash eighty-one dash three sub D sub one of the Official Code of Georgia annotated OCGA, and.
Director Dos?
Chairman.
Without objection, I'd like to spend the reading of the remainder of this resolution. No objection, Director Dos. If you would, tell us the amount.
Chairman, do you want me to read the individual funds or the total of all?
I think we can do that. We got the individual funds. That'd be placed somewhere people could read if they want to. Just give us the total number.
Chairman, the revenues for all our other funds are five million, five hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. The total expenditures of all our other funds are five billion, five hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. The budgets is, the budgets are balanced.
Is there a motion? We approve the resolution.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item nineteen is the FY-26 Irma General Liability Insurance, Director Dos.
Chairman, just one moment, please. Chairman and Commissioners, you have, I provided you with our renewal from Association of County Commissioners, intergovernmental insurance trust fund. Our renewal contribution this year is two hundred twenty-seven, one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. We discussed about increasing our GL limits to three billion, which is the additional seven thousand, ninety-seven dollars. Chairman, I'm asking the Board to approve our insurance for next year with three million dollar coverage at two hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Two thirty-four?
Two thirty-four, two eighty, Chairman.
Okay. That's, that's right, that a seventy thousand dollar increase from last year, is that correct?
That would be seventy-seven thousand, that one. Seventy-seven now, Chairman. Yes, sir.
When we raised that three million, that's what changed that.
It's seventy thousand dollars before we added the additional coverage.
Okay, so that, so that's a seventy-seven thousand dollar increase from last year's general liability property. All right, you got the amount, two hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. This will be paid from the general fund. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item twenty is FY-26 County Health Insurance, Director Dos.
Chairman and Commissioners, we're asking the Board to accept the renewal from United Healthcare. It is a thirty-four percent increase. The, the rate for employee only before the employee contribution is going up from eight hundred and forty-three dollars to one thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And our, which is, once we add the employee cost share back to it, it will increase based on the current census of employees taking insurance by two hundred and seven thousand dollars next year. This is the only, this is the best and only responsive quote that we received, and we're asking the Board to approve it.
Okay, you heard it. It's it's eight hundred, eighteen, six, sixty-one, is that still?
I'm sorry, second, Chairman.
Is the total amount eight hundred, eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-one?
Yes, Sir Chairman. It, it all depends upon the total number of employees each month, and so they quoted us at sixty-three, but we currently have sixty, and I think that's the number I gave you based on, on what we currently have. Their quote actually says it would be eight fifty-nine, five ninety-five, but that was based on sixty-three employees for each month for twelve months.
Okay, I don't guess I need to have that eight eighteen in a, in a motion?
No, so we just need to renew it. The renewal rate is, is one thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars per employee per month.
I got you. I got it all written out right here. Okay, is there a motion that we approve the county's health insurance for the county's employees?
Same move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion?
I just want to.
Commissioner Antonakis?
I just want to say thank you because I know you put in a lot of hours working with some local people trying to get us a better rate. You were, I mean, you did what you could, so I just want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you, ma'am.
If he would continue to work on that, and could, then Director Broom would get people's help a lot better. We would, we wouldn't have all these things. All in favor of the motion, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Clerk, you look to me like you thought I was gonna get the call to vote you. Item twenty-one, twenty, twenty-four water plant O and M expense, Director Seymour.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, you have in your packet a audit from the city of Lincoln's during twenty-four O and M of the plant. According to that audit, we underpaid nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars, forty-five cents. So we need a motion to pay that amount, and you set the current water rate from the city to the county at two dollars and any one cents.
Okay, you heard the request from Director Seymour that we approve both of these, the payment we have to pay in addition to what we paid all year long, nine six hundred and thirteen dollars, forty-five cents, plus the increase in our water rates, and that's, that wasn't a whole big increase, was it?
Sir.
That increase went from what, to two eighty-one?
Two sixteen to two eighty-one.
Huh?
Two sixteen to two eighty-one.
Well, that's a pretty good increase.
Yes, sir.
Ooh, yeah, everything you look at is going up. Okay, this will be paid from the water fund. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item number twenty-two is the twenty-five L-Meg SAP Funds, Director Seymour.
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a federal grant that's handed down through the GDOT, and this is additional funding in our L-Meg program that we could apply for. And so we've applied for that funding, but we need the Board of Commissioners to approve that, that, that grant. The amount is five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. It's for striping and signage of several roads. I think you've got a list of those roads and estimated cost range of those roads. And, Mr. Chairman, we need an approval to, to receive that grant funding.
Okay, the motion is to approve a grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation for the restriping and signage of sixty-three point fourteen miles of roads that are costing five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And to give us the authority to, to sign the paperwork with DOT. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second. Let us see, getting money. That's expensive paint, though.
High-priced paint. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item twenty-three lights at Dover Partridge Annex at the library, Director Seymour.
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman. As discussed in the work session, we've got twenty-three lights that need to be replaced in the library, in the Dover and the bathrooms, and we've changed out the rest of them already with LEDs. And so I'm asking that y'all approve this, I don't even add it up, it's twenty, thirty, thirty-three hundred and thirty-five dollars, is that right?
Three thousand, three hundred, thirty-five dollars.
Yes, sir. Be approved to replace those lights in the library with LEDs. I did check. There was a question at, at the work session about what the refund would be to rebate from Georgia Power. I think it's gonna be about three hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Okay, we talked about this. Is there a motion that we approve the expenditure to change out some lights at the library, Dover Partridge Room? Dover Pottery Room, thirty three hundred and thirty five dollars, this will be paid from the Dover Pottery Fund. Is that a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, I. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item twenty four is the Ag Arena Roof Overhang Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, as discussed also in the work session, was the addition of the roof line from the new building out of the Ag Arena to tie into the existing arena from Tyson Steel. We got a quote for that, I think the one that's in your book is wrong, though. It's thirty eight thousand, which I may have discussed at the work session, it was thirty eight, not twenty two. So I'm asking for approval, Mr. Chairman, to expand those funds out of the funds that have already been appropriated for the Ag Arena to make that extension.
What's the total amount?
Thirty eight thousand even.
Okay, you heard the request on, on this to be paid for splash funds, seven, is that a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Antonakis, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tankersley.
I have requested a contract from them, I have not received it yet. But you notice in that quote that we got thirty eight thousand, I went back and looked at it again, but the footer is included in this, y'all.
Correct.
That's big.
Yes, sir.
When you start to think about what them last costs was put in, so, I don't know if that was an accident by them or not, that's why I want that contract.
We gonna take advantage of it, no, aren't we?
We won't write them a check if we get all that. You have any experience in putting up metal building?
Just a tad.
Okay, any other question? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, I. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item twenty three is Department Family Children's Service Board Department, Commissioner Tankersley.
I'd like to present to you Jennifer Perry.
Who?
Jennifer Perry, P R R I N.
She live in District Four?
She does.
Alright, Jenny Perry.
She close enough to the line, she don't.
Okay, you have a request and a motion by Commissioner Tankersley for Jenny Perry to the Defax Board, is that a, is second?
Our second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, I. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried, is that a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Tankersley, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, I. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, we stand adjourned.